Yeah, I am recording the meeting, don't worry, none of your faces will appear on the recording. But I'm going to publish my bits of this on YouTube, okay? But don't worry, none of your faces will appear on YouTube, so don't be too alarmed. I'm just recording what I'm doing. Okay, so there are two sessions to this, I should have said this at the start. Essentially, timings, the timings that we publish for these things are very, very fluid. But theoretically, in my mind, we're going to have two sessions, each lasting about an hour. The first session, we're going to look at things in very general terms, okay? Up to where it says recommended reading, so we're going to go over the topic. And this is meant to be really just an introduction to the topic, kind of whistle stop talk. And then after the break, probably about half two, the final session, we're going to look at two case studies. We're going to look at a guy called Georges Le Mettre, a Belgian priest who discovered the Big Bang Theory. And we're going to look at something called the fine tuning argument, which is absolutely fascinating. Now, I have a set of notes, about four and a half thousand pages of notes, which is just simply mine for this session. What I'm going to do after the session is I'll send around the notes and I'll also send around a PDF of the PowerPoint. It's actually a keynote, but not to worry. I'll send around the PDF of the keynote file that I'm using, so that you'll have my notes and you'll have all these slides. So I shouldn't, I won't be saying too much that's not on that. So you shouldn't need to make copious notes if you're a note-taking kind of person, but obviously you can if you want to. Okay, so let's do this. This is what we're going to get into today. Okay, these are the things we're going to cover. Now, for me, just to make this a little bit more broad for a second. This is all tied up with something called apologetics, which is something I've been interested in for a very long time now. Apologetics is the discipline that deals with a rational defence of the Christian faith. It comes from the Greek word apologia, which means to give a reason or a defence, okay? So apologetics is nothing to do with apologising, it's about explaining, it's about letting people know what's going on. And apologetics is about giving a rational defence of the faith. So it's about trying to convince people that there's a God. Well, kind of. One of my kind of apologetics heroes, if you like, is a guy named William Lane Craig. I'll refer to him a few times today. He is an absolute genius when it comes to defending and explaining the faith. When he came over to England in 2011 to do a speaking tour, Richard Dawkins literally ran away from him. Richard Dawkins wouldn't face him, really, I think, because he knew that he'd get his butt kicked round the room, okay? William Lane Craig is brilliant. What William Lane Craig says is, he says that actually, we can't outright convince people that there's a God. There is no slam dunk irrefutable proof. It takes a little bit of faith. And actually, for me, I don't think God would give us irrefutable proof. Because if he gave us irrefutable proof, it would take away our free will. We wouldn't have the capacity any longer to grow towards him, okay? What William Lane Craig says that we're trying to do in apologetics is, we're not trying to convince people that there's a God. But what we're trying to do is, we're trying to show people that it's not unreasonable for a thinking person to conclude from the evidence available that there's a God. In other words, we're trying to convince people that it's actually not that wacky and actually quite sound to believe in a God, okay? Then coming to personal faith, it's less of a head thing, more of a heart thing. They have to go the rest of the way. And that's where this idea of faith comes in. But this is what we're doing, we're doing apologetics today. There's two types of apologetics really, negative apologetics and positive. Positive apologetics is where we put forward arguments for the existence of God. Or we put forward arguments to defend some aspects of the faith. So positive apologetics might be making a statement like, "God is the best explanation for the apparent fine tuning of the universe." That's what we're going to do later this afternoon. Negative apologetics might be answering a question like, for instance, "If there's a God, then why do bad things happen? If there's a God, then why are some Christians such toe rags?" Okay? That's negative apologetics, it's responding to other people's assertions. By the way, another thing I forgot to say at the start, as we go along, if you have any questions, please just yell out, that's fine. Try not to put them in the chat, because it's hard to see the chat when you're screen sharing. But if you've got any questions, please yell out, that's no problem. So apologetics can be positive or negative. Another kind of axis for apologetics we tend to talk about is, apologetics can be essential apologetics, Christian apologetics, or Catholic apologetics. Essential apologetics is about convincing people there's a God, okay? Christian apologetics is about convincing people that Jesus Christ is the true revelation of God. So it's about convincing people specifically of the Christian faith. And normally, but not always with that, we probably start with arguments for the resurrection, which is a whole other topic, because there's a huge amount there. And then finally, Catholic apologetics isn't really so fashionable these days, because we're all quite ecumenical. But Catholic apologetics is about convincing people that the Catholic faith is the more true and the more correct one among the Christian traditions, okay? So, again, this is just a little bit of background, this may be interesting. There are a number of different arguments for God. This isn't an exhaustive list, but there are a number of different ways that we can argue for the existence of God, okay? There is the ontological argument. The ontological argument says, "Why can we even imagine the idea of a God in the first place?" Okay, what the argument proposes is that if there were no God, we wouldn't be able to conceive of the very idea. The cosmological argument, and it was William Lane Craig that really made this one quite famous, although it's always been around. The cosmological argument says, "Why does the universe exist?" And really, the cosmological argument has three statements to it. The first statement is, "Anything which begins to exist has a cause." The universe began to exist, therefore the universe has a cause. And as Christians, we believe that cause is God. Then there's the teleological argument, we're going to be doing a little bit of this later in the day. The teleological argument says, "Why does there appear to be order and design in the universe?" And actually, there is, there's a significant amount in the early universe that very much appears to be tinkered with and tweaked in a certain way. This, for me, is one of the more fascinating arguments, and we'll get into this after the break. Then we have the moral argument, this was the one, I think, that convinced me. If there's no God, then where do we get the idea of objective right and wrong, objective good and bad? If there's no God, then ultimately there's no reason, there's ultimately no good. So how can we feel these things? How can we sense these things? Then there's what's called the argument from contingency. Things don't just happen by themselves or go back infinitely. Among other people, Thomas Aquinas made this one famous. What he said is that things are always caused by other things. And what you then have to do is go back and back and back and back and back. So thing A was caused by thing B. What was thing B caused by? It was caused by thing C. What was thing C caused by? It was caused by thing D. Aquinas had this idea of infinite regression, okay? Infinite regression is where you do that forever. And he said, "Actually, you can't, it's impossible, it's impractical." So at some point, we have to have this necessary being, okay? And then finally, there's the argument from existence, why does anything exist at all? Now, if I've made your brain hurt at this point already, don't worry too much. This stuff isn't really on point with the topic that we're going to be covering today. I just thought it might be an interesting introduction. I might do a study there at some point on the arguments for God, because I think that would be quite interesting. But that's not really our purpose today. What we're doing today really is, we're looking at this issue of faith and science. So, has science destroyed faith? One story I often tell people is, when I worked down south, I used to work in Arundel Brighton Diocese, which is basically Sussex and Surrey, for those that don't have a precise knowledge of their Catholic dioceses in England and Wales. It was a good job and it was in a good area. And one thing I used to do was quite often take kids to Lewds. And there was a lad who I knew very well, his name was James. And he came to Lewds quite a few times, and then he just stopped coming. And I said to his mum, you know, "Has James these days, what's happening?" And his mum, she got a little bit upset and she said that he doesn't really go to church anymore. He's not really that interested in his faith anymore. And I asked her why that was, I said, "You know, what, do you know what it was that happened to him?" And she said, she said, "Well, one day, I said to him, 'James, why aren't you interested in faith anymore?' And he said to me, 'Mum, I can't take that stuff seriously, I'm a scientist.'" And at that point, I just wanted to grab James by the throat, really. Not really, because that would be highly unethical, but it's just such a crazy idea. Because everybody sort of assumes that if you're into science and if you believe in science and if you follow a scientific rational mindset, then you can't do the whole God thing. But there's no actual reason why that's true, as we'll hopefully see in the next hour or so. But you just see this assumption everywhere. I'm a big fan of Red Dwarf. Has anyone else, has anyone else come across that cultural treasure? Yeah.
I introduced you to it, Jack.
You did, yes, you did. It's a wonderful programme, but one of the later ones, because they did some reboots. You had Crichton, who's the droid, the robot. He was sort of trying to say that two things were just poles apart. And he just glibly said, "Yes, it's like the Catholic Church and science." And again, I just wanted to throw something at the TV. I didn't, because that wouldn't have done anything except for break my TV. But it's just this idea that faith and science are at odds with each other. It's so well ingrained, it's just there, and everybody just kind of assumes it's true. And it's an idea that basically needs taken around the back and thoroughly beating up. This is a sort of a device I often use to explain the situation. Credit where it's due, I stole this from a Teze brother. So originally, it was two maps of France. But when I'm doing this interactively, it doesn't really work on Zoom. I do this with teenagers a lot. This is particularly good with confirmation groups, by the way. I show them two maps. And I say, "Well, what's the map on the right?" And they say, "It's the UK." It's actually Great Britain, that's the name of the big island that we're all sitting on. Then I say to them, "What's the map on the left?" And they say, "Well, it's Great Britain." And then I say to them, "Are they the same?" And they say, "Well, no." And then I say, "Okay, which one's correct?" And they say, "Well, they're both correct." And this is, this is a little bit clear, they kind of know where it's going. But I say to them, "Well, if they're different, if they're not the same, how can they both be correct?" And the answer is obviously that they're trying to show things from a different angle. The one on the right is a topographical map, it shows the kind of the bumps and dips, it shows all the hills, okay? The one on the left is what I think you'd call a political map, it shows the counties. But what these maps are trying to do is, they're trying to show the same thing from two different angles. The map on the right isn't interested in the names of the counties, the map on the left isn't interested in the hills. They're trying to do different things. And that's what faith and science are trying to do. They're trying to show the same reality from two different angles, and they don't have to conflict with each other. Another analogy that's often used is the cake analogy. If you've done an Alpha course, or if you've led youth Alpha, you'll be very familiar with this. If you have a cake, okay, you can get some scientists to take it apart. And they can tell you what it's made of, they can tell you how heavy it is. They can tell you how much sugar is in it, how many calories are in it, how much protein, fat, carbs, et cetera, et cetera. What they can't do is, they can't tell you why it was made. Only the creator of the cake can tell you why it was made, okay? And that would be somebody saying, "I made it for my friend, it's his birthday." The scientists can't do that. But similarly, the person who made the cake, probably, unless they happen to be a scientist as well, can't analyse it and say, "It's got this many calories, et cetera, et cetera." Okay, so it's more than possible to see two things from different, sorry, to see the same thing from two different angles without those two angles contradicting. Right, before we go any further, I'm just going to define some terms. We're gonna, I'm gonna chuck a lot of words at you during this session. So I think it's only fair to tell you what they are, in my mind at least. So, science, we probably know what science is. Science is the process of investigating natural phenomena. So the three broad headings for science are physics, chemistry and biology. But there's many, many different sciences within that, we'll talk about cosmology, for instance. Reason is what the natural sciences mostly sits within. And reason is the power of the mind to, wow, that's a bit of a typo. That should say, "to think" rather than "tonk." You know, I'm just gonna own up to the fact that I typed this up last night while I was watching the football, okay? So there's gonna be a few typos, because my mind wasn't a hundred percent on the task, okay? It's the power of the mind to think, understand and form judgements logically. Or the power of the mind to tonk, if you like. Faith is about putting trust in something. Or in the religious sense, it's about assenting to revelation. It's really important at this point to make the distinction between faith and superstition. A lot of people think that once anything logical enters into it, it's not faith. Actually, no, 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 faith is about placing your trust in something that you've seen, something that's been revealed, okay? So faith starts with logic, and then faith kind of goes the rest of the way. Superstition is where there's nothing logical at all, okay? So superstition is about putting your trust in something where there's no proposed revelation at all. The dictionary says it's "an excessively credulous belief in and reverence for the supernatural." Next phrase, scientism. Generally speaking, in theology, when we put "ism" on the end of something, what we mean is, we mean taking it to an extreme. Taking it to a silly extreme. So scientism is the view that we should believe only what can be proven scientifically. In other words, science is the sole source of knowledge and the sole arbiter of truth. There is something called the scientific principle. The scientific principle says we should only accept things that can be proven by science. As Bishop Robert Barron points out, the problem with that is that it's self-refuting. Because you can't prove that principle by science. Rationalism is the belief that knowledge is only valid if you have that by logical reasoning, and that we should go no further than logical reasoning. If we can't prove something with a precise mathematical formula or from precise kind of empirical observation, we shouldn't accept it. Fideism is the opposite of rationalism. Fideism is an epistemological theory. Epistemology is about how we come to know things. Which maintains that faith is independent of reason, or that reason and faith are hostile to each other. Now, you might think that the church would be more a fan of fideism than rationalism. Interestingly, the church has actually condemned both of them. We'll come on to this later, but the church has condemned rationalism, as you'd expect. But the church also, at the same time, condemned the idea of fideism. The church said quite clearly, "We need both." Okay, and finally, cosmology. Cosmology is the study of the universe's origins and developments. And we're going to be getting into a teeny little bit of that later on. We won't be going too much into it, because to be honest, when you get too far into cosmology, it makes my brain hurt. But we'll do as much as we need to do to kind of bring this into land. Okay, so what went wrong? Why did people start to assume that faith and science were against each other? Why did people start to assume that if you were a rational thinking person, then you couldn't be one of these God people? What went wrong? There's a few different ways to answer this question, and there's a few different ways to tell this story. I'm going to give you my answer, which might not be the same as the answer someone else will give. It's a complicated story, people may choose to focus on different parts of the story. But I'm going to zero in on really four things. We're going to have a little bit of a look at Descartes, the Enlightenment, Darwin and biblical literalism, and then finally, 9/11 and the new atheism, okay? This is my attempt at kind of explaining why these two things got separated out in people's minds. Firstly, just give me a nod, has anybody heard of Rene Descartes? Yeah, some people, yes, some people, no. He's very big in mathematics. You might have heard of Cartesian coordinates, for kind of plotting directions on a map. That was his thing, he did a lot of work in mathematics. Very, very interesting guy, Descartes. Very, very misunderstood as well. He's one of the most famous philosophers, mathematicians and scientists in history. He was one of the key figures in the move towards modernism in Europe. He was born in France in 1596, and he had a very good education. He was, he came from a very, very rich family, so really, he had the best education that money could buy. He was taught maths, he was taught physics, he was taught theology, philosophy. He was actually first educated in maths and physics by the Jesuits, interestingly. But anyway, in 1619, he was a soldier. And he had a bit of a spiritual crisis. His brain sort of started to hurt, because he couldn't figure out a lot of things. He was in the south of Germany, in a place called Ulm, which, interestingly, I've been to when I was younger, very nice place. And what he did was, he decided to lock himself in a log cabin with a wood burning stove. And he said, "I'm not coming out of this cabin until I've got everything figured out." Okay, hugely arrogant assumption, but that's what he did. He said, "I'm not going to come out of this cabin until I've got everything figured out." So what he did was, he started off by taking a wrecking ball to everything that he couldn't immediately prove and he couldn't immediately see. So he took a wrecking ball to the idea of the church, he took a wrecking ball to the idea of Jesus, God, goodness, right and wrong, everything, okay? And then he discovered something really interesting. He discovered that the only thing he couldn't chuck out, and I'm kind of quoting Bishop Robert Barron here. He discovered that the only thing he couldn't chuck out was the wrecking ball itself. He discovered that actually, his own ability to think and to reason things through was something he could rely on, it was something immensely powerful. And at that point, he said this very famous statement. Most people have heard this statement, even if they haven't heard of Descartes. He said, "I think, therefore I am. I have the ability to reason, I have the ability to think, and that makes me something." Now, from there, he built everything back up again. And what a lot of people don't realise about Descartes was, he was eventually able to put God back into his system. One of his key innovations was applying mathematical methodology to philosophy. Now, to be honest, this wasn't quite as new as some people claim, but it was still quite important. The thing people miss, as I've said, is he did put God back into his system. He believed in God. His belief in God was, essentially, he believed that if he could conceive of infinity, then an infinite power must exist, okay? It's kind of an ontological argument, if you remember that slide from a while ago. He considered himself to be a devout Catholic, but the church at the time disagreed with a lot of what he said. Nevertheless, he became an atheist icon. And he, as much as anybody else, started this idea of rationalism, which we've just explained in the last slide. This idea that you should basically kick out anything that can't be proven rationally by logical thought. One of, there's a lot of people these days kind of pushing the idea of rationalism. Have you ever come across, there's an Irish comedian, this is slightly out of left field. But there's an Irish comedian called Dara O'Brien, but then if you've come across him. He does Mock for the Week, he does a few other things. He's, he's actually a very funny guy, he's also a physics graduate. He's quite clever when it comes to physics and cosmology, he does a lot of documentaries. One thing he said a while ago is, he said, "We should throw out anything that can't be proven by science." He said, "We should throw out anything that can't be empirically proven by science." And when I was a school chaplain, one of my six formers mentioned that to me. So I was doing a session with them, and I said, "Okay, put your hands up if you've ever loved somebody." And all of their hands went up. "Put your hands up if you think human rights are a good thing." All of the hands went up. "Put your hands up if you think what the Nazis did was wrong." All of the hands went up. "Put your hands up if you think friendship's a good thing." "What about justice? What about family? What about community?" All of the hands went up. And at that point, I said to them, "Okay, you've just put yourself next to a lot of ideas which cannot in any way be proven by science." So that's where rationalism really falls down, that's where scientism really falls down. But nevertheless, Descartes kind of, and I'm not sure he meant to do it, I'm not sure he meant to pop up atheism. But really, he, as much as anybody, started this idea of rationalism. And kind of, science-based atheism was drawn on it ever since, really. The second thing to focus on is the Enlightenment. Scholars disagree about exactly what the Enlightenment was. In essence, it was a sort of a movement in the 17th and 18th century, the 1600s and 1700s, all thereabouts. It was seen as a little bit of a watershed in Western philosophy. Reason, and again, the pursuit of empirical evidence, was given far more prominence than it had been in the past. The Enlightenment changed religion, and it also weakened the influence that religion had. Nevertheless, once again, the fact that it's not really that hostile to religion is often missed. As with Descartes, people assume that the Enlightenment was all about giving religion a kicking. And if you actually look at what was happening at the time, that's not really what happened. That's not really the full story. And I'm going to demonstrate that by showing you these guys. This is, according to one of my favourite websites, historyhit.com. These guys are the ten key figures of the Enlightenment. You don't have to know too much about them, if I'm honest, I don't know too much about them. But going along the top row and then the bottom row, you've got Descartes, first of all, who we've just talked about. Then you've got Francis Bacon, John Locke, Frederick the Great, Voltaire, who you've probably heard of, even if only in passing. Benjamin Franklin, bottom left. Denis Deleuze, Jean-Jacques Rousseau, who was a thinker in so many ways. Did a lot of stuff on political thought, political theory. Thomas Paine, and then the final one was David Hume. These guys were really the big movers and shakers in the Enlightenment. These guys were really the big movers and shakers in this thing, this movement that's supposed to have given religion such a kicking. But here's the thing. Six of these guys were absolutely devout Christians. Six of these guys were out and out serious Christians. Only one of them, that's David Hume on the bottom right, was a definite, definite atheist. The other three, that we haven't talked about, they weren't Christians, but all of them said very, very clearly that they believed in God. So for nine out of those ten guys, they had a very, very clear concept that there was a God. So for nine out of those ten guys, this movement that they were supposedly starting was never about kicking out God. So the idea that the Enlightenment was anti-God is one of those great, one of those great lies that's kind of been passed down over the years, that really just isn't true. Next, I appreciate I'm covering a lot very quickly here, but I tend to find that's the best way to do things. Darwin and biblical literalism. You'll know about Darwin, again, even if only in passing. Darwin first proposed the idea of evolution. So he first proposed that the reason why human beings are very, very intricate machines and have these bodies that function in a certain way is because we evolved from lesser animals over millions and millions and millions of years, okay? That's not really challenged these days, even most Christians accept that. Although some Christians are what's called young earth creationists, who take Genesis literally, and fair play to them, but that's quite unusual. Darwin is famous for giving us this idea of natural selection. His book on the Origin of Species in 1859 really changed a lot. And this at the time was seen as a huge blow to Christianity, because Genesis was kind of viewed as literal history at the time. Although it actually wasn't viewed as literal history by that many people, which is an interesting thing. What people miss, and again, with all these things, there's things that people miss. What people miss here is that Darwin and Genesis didn't necessarily have to be a threat to each other. Newman, you might have heard of Cardinal John Henry Newman. He was probably the leading Catholic thinker in this country at the time. And when he heard about this idea of revolution, what he immediately said is, he said, "Well, I don't know if this idea is true or not, I don't have a clue. But if it is true, it's no threat to our faith whatsoever." Why? Because actually, although some people took Genesis literally, it had long been understood that much of the Bible was meant to be quite figurative. It had long been understood that actually parts of the Bible were supposed to be a bit of an allegory. They were revealed truth, but they were telling a story in a certain way. They were telling a story using quite flowery language. Now, at this point, the atheist comes back and says, "Oh, well, that's convenient, isn't it?" But the fact is, there are Christians way before Darwin, who were looking at the Bible and saying, "This isn't literal." You can go back to Augustine in the fourth century, you can go back to Origen in the second century. You could even go back to Jesus, who looks at certain bits of the Old Testament and says to the people listening to him, "Okay, this bit of the Old Testament, this isn't literally true. What it meant was this, this and this." Jesus actually refers back to his own things that he's said in parables. And said, "Okay, I just told you a parable, it wasn't true, let me unpack the point for you." And actually, ancient cultures all over the place were transmitting their truths at the time in that way, by using flowery language. So the idea that Darwin and Genesis are kind of So the idea that Darwin and Genesis are kind of against each other really misunderstands what Genesis is about. Genesis isn't narrative history, it's theology, it's poetry, it's trying to tell a story in a way that people can understand. Now, Bishop Robert Barron, who is, again, one of my favourite people. If you want to be kind of fed and nourished, just check out some of his videos on YouTube, he's absolutely brilliant. He always talks about the straw man of biblical literalism. A straw man argument is an argument which argues against the point that nobody's actually making, okay? So the straw man of biblical literalism is atheists saying Genesis has been disproven. Therefore, your religion's a load of rubbish. And it's a straw man argument because actually we're not saying Genesis is narrative history. And we never really were. Nevertheless, what we're doing here is we're doing the what went wrong section. And actually, rightly or wrongly, definitely wrongly, Darwin's work did mean that in a lot of people's eyes, Christian faith took a hit because it was seen as kind of squishing out these old fashioned ideas. Finally, nine eleven and the new atheism. Most of you will remember September the eleventh, two thousand and one. I remember it very clearly. I was between jobs at the time and I just got up because I was like, I'm twenty-one, twenty-two and I don't actually know, I'd been into town that morning because I was about to go and live overseas. And I'd been into town that morning to do a few jobs. And one of the jobs I had to do was buy travel insurance. And I didn't buy the travel insurance, I thought, ah, I'll do it later. And then, of course, after September the eleventh, the price of travel insurance went through the absolute roof. But I remember that day very clearly. And I was just a couple of years into taking my faith seriously at the time. And I remember thinking that, I remember, I remember that day stopping and thinking, this has probably been done by religious extremists. And I really, really hope this doesn't turn people against religion. I remember thinking that very clearly. Unfortunately, I think at least to a degree it did, you know. There was a movement, I think, that was already brewing, but really September the eleventh didn't do religion many favours. Within five years, you had Richard Dawkins' book, The God Delusion. And that was really seen as the start of what's kind of called the new atheism. A lot of people say there's nothing really new about the new atheism. Aggressive atheism has been around for a very long time. It's just now it's got better marketing, people are taking more notice. But again, it's something that kind of gave, kind of gave religion a bit of a kicking. The God Delusion itself, this sort of aggressive atheism became more popular. It was not new by any means. I mean, you had atheists like Bertrand Russell a long time ago. In, one thing I'm really into is space, space exploration, when the Apollo eight astronauts read the creation account from Genesis back in the sixties, NASA received a huge amount, a huge amount of complaints. So kind of aggressive atheism is not something new. One of the hallmarks of the new atheism though, which is kind of interesting, is you get a lot of scientists now jumping on it and trying to be philosophers and trying to be theologians and making a complete hash of it. I mean, we've all seen Stephen Hawking trying to do philosophy and theology and really getting it quite embarrassingly wrong. There was a great physicist called Richard Feynman. He once said, quote, outside of his or her field, the scientist is just as dumb as the next guy. Similarly, Einstein once said, scientists make poor philosophers. A bit of a quote about Stephen Hawking as well. This is from John Lennox, from a book I'll recommend in a moment. The British astronomer royal Baron Rees, who was a friend of Stephen Hawking, was asked by the Guardian newspaper what he thought of Hawking's pronouncement that the creation of the universe did not require a God. Rees replied, I know Stephen Hawking well enough to know that he has read little philosophy and even less theology. So I don't think his views should be taken with any special weight. So that was a thing with the new atheism. You've got all these guys kind of jumping on atheism because all of a sudden it became trendy. And you've got this weird mix of people who really didn't understand philosophy and theology trying to comment on it. And producing some really quite weak stuff. But because the church wasn't really in a great position to respond, this stuff never really got very well challenged. And that, I guess, is why I'm doing stuff like this, to get the knowledge out there. Next little bit I want to look at, and we'll take a break in about ten fifteen minutes or so. Christians in science, I love this stuff. Because a lot of people assume that if you are a Christian, you've got no interest in science. You think science is just kind of a work of the devil. Or similarly, if you're an intelligent scientist, you can't possibly believe in God, okay? History doesn't bear that idea out. There's a great guy around today called Francis Collins. Francis Collins was the director of the Human Genome Project. He currently works for the US government and he is the scientist who's kind of spearheading their fight against Covid. Okay, very intelligent guy, very, very, very serious Christian, okay? Guys like him and many others proved that those two things can go together quite well. But there's tons of people in history. I've made a list of really just a few highlights, but actually this is a list made from a much bigger list. Georges Lemaître was a Belgian Catholic priest. We'll talk about him a bit more later. He first postulated the idea of the Big Bang. You know, whenever people say to you that faith and science are against each other, it was a Catholic priest who discovered the Big Bang theory. I think that's really cool. Gregor Mendel, he was an Augustinian friar, again, a Catholic priest. He was the guy who was responsible for the science of genetics. Again, a Catholic priest started the science of genetics. Nicholas Copernicus. It's controversial as to whether he was a priest or not. Historians disagree, he probably was. But he first postulated the idea of the heliocentric universe. In other words, he first came up with the idea that actually, rather than the earth being fixed, maybe what's going on is the sun is kind of more fixed and the planets are revolving around the sun. Got a lot of stick for it at the time, but it turned out to be right. Isaac Newton, Isaac Newton, after Einstein, he's probably the most important physicist in history. And he's also one of the most important mathematicians in history. He was also a strong Christian. He even wrote theological works. He even spent his time writing reams and reams of stuff about his faith in God. James Clark Maxwell, he was a mathematical physicist. He was responsible for one of the two great unifications in physics. What physicists like doing is bringing things together and saying, okay, this thing happening and this thing happening, they're linked. Physicists like doing that. James Clark Maxwell was one of the main people who did that. After Newton and Einstein, a lot of people would probably put him next among the most important physicists in history. Again, absolutely huge Christian. Roger Bacon, one of my favourites, Franciscan friar, again, a Catholic priest. He was one of the key people behind what we call the scientific method. In other words, what is the process and the steps of actually doing science? How and why do we look into things? He was one of the main people behind that. In actual fact, Wikipedia lists eleven people who made key contributions in this area. Wikipedia lists eleven people who made key contributions to the development of the scientific method. Ten of them were explicit theists. So ten of those people explicitly believed in God. One of those people, by the way, was William of Ockham, another Franciscan friar, another Franciscan priest. He gave us Occam's razor. Have you ever heard of that? Occam's razor says, the most obvious explanation is normally the right explanation. Okay, and that's often used by atheists that are trying to knock down religion. You know, I've been in debates with people where they've said, well, Occam's razor tells us that you're wrong. At which point I love telling them that Ockham was a Catholic priest. Another Catholic priest, Robert Grosstester, the only Englishman on this list, I believe. He was an English bishop, somewhere over in the east, I think, not sure where. He was the first person to write down the steps of a scientific experiment. He was also a key person in the development of the scientific method, but he was the first person to write down the steps of an experiment. If like me, you'll have really boring memories from when you were at school of having to do experiments in science and being told that it's really important to write them down in a certain way. Do you remember that? In our school, we had to write down problem, supposition, equipment, method, outcome, solution, et cetera, et cetera. Robert Grosstester was the first person to do that. And actually, rather than just boring me when I was at school, it is actually very important. Kepler, Johannes Kepler, key figure in the seventeenth century scientific revolution. He did a lot of work on planetary motion and he provided a key foundation for Newton's work. His belief that God created the universe and put order into the universe was what largely guided his work. Pascal, mathematician, physicist, philosopher and theologian. For him, those four things went together just fine. One of the two inventors of the mechanical calculator. He even started to write a systematic defence of the Christian faith. It wasn't complete by the time he died, but nevertheless, it shows that his faith was there. Boyle, Boyle is best known for Boyle's law, which is about the relationship between pressure and volume of gas. Don't ask me what that's all about, but for science bots, that Boyle's law is actually a very big deal. He was also one of the contributors to the development of the scientific method, along with Pascal and Bacon. He worked to show how faith and science can support each other. He did a lot of work telling people why he thought the two actually backed each other up. Faraday, you'll have heard of Faraday maybe in connection with electricity. English scientist, he did a lot of work on electromagnetism, among other things. He established the idea of the electromagnetic field in physics, and that's quite a big thing. He also first posited the idea that electromagnetism could affect light rays, okay? Which is very, very important for cosmology. He was a devout Christian, so much so that he served as a deacon in his church. His biographer said this, he said, a strong sense of the unity of God and nature pervaded Faraday's life and work. So all of these guys, absolutely huge Christians, absolutely huge scientists, for them, there really wasn't a conflict. And yes, there's been atheist scientists as well, of course there have. But the point is, there's been so many huge figures in the history of science who've been serious Christians or at least people who believed in God, who saw absolutely no contradiction between the two. So the idea that faith and science are against each other, if you look at these guys, if you look at what really happened with the Enlightenment, if you look at what really happened with Darwin and Newman and all those guys, this idea just doesn't appear really in history. Now, a lot of people would say, okay, so there were a lot of Christians in science, but maybe these guys kept their faith and their science separate. Well, actually, we've seen from what we've said that for a lot of them, they saw the two of it as being intrinsically linked. James Clark Maxwell did most of his work at Cambridge University in a laboratory which is still there called the Cavendish Physics Lab. The Cavendish Physics Lab has done some great work over the years. Thirty Nobel prizes have been won as a result of the work done in that lab. That was where James Clark Maxwell worked and he put this over the door and it's still there to this day. It's from Psalm one eleven. Great are the works of the Lord, they are pondered by all who delight in them. That's Psalm one eleven, verse two. That's a really big kind of banner, kind of motto for Christians in science. And it's been above the door of this lab at Cambridge where all these Nobel prizes have been won for years and years. Great are the works of the Lord, they are pondered by all who delight in them. It's interesting as well, Einstein, Albert Einstein, who pretty much everybody would say was the greatest physicist ever. Einstein, on his wall, had pictures of Faraday, Newton and Maxwell, all committed Christians. Einstein also hung out with Georges Lemaître and it was Georges Lemaître who convinced Einstein that the universe had a single fixed origin. So Einstein, the greatest physicist ever, he was kind of a secular Jew. It's difficult pinning down whether he believed in God, people differ, but he certainly had a huge amount of respect for these guys. Now, when we're talking about Christians in science, the atheists, you know, or the Gemma agitator at this point, would probably say, but what about Galileo? Okay. A lot of people go straight to Galileo when the topic of faith and science comes up. By the way, I think we're going to run a little bit over the hour. We're probably going to go another ten minutes or so. Bishop Robert Barron, he says this, he says, it wasn't our finest hour, but it's hardly emblematic of the relationship between the church and science. It's also misunderstood. For one thing, Galileo was a strong Christian throughout his life. He once said this, he said, the laws of nature are written by the hand of God in a language of mathematics. He also said, the human mind is a work of God and one of the most excellent. And he initially enjoyed a lot of support from the church. It was actually atheist philosophers who initially started to oppose him. And the reason they did that was because he challenged Aristotle's worldview. Among other things, Aristotle thought that the sun was perfect, he thought that the heavens were unchanging. Galileo started to spot things like sunspots on the sun, which challenged that idea. These philosophers then put pressure on the church to denounce him. And because the church was losing a little bit of power at that time, the church, to its shame, caved to that pressure. And contrary to popular belief, Galileo was never tortured. He was actually held under house arrest in quite luxurious homes. So the church didn't do itself proud there. The church did screw that one up. You know, no sensible apologist will ever say that the church has got everything right. That would be ridiculous. So the church got a lot wrong there, but it's not quite the way that it was described. And actually, it's really not emblematic of the church's whole relationship with science, especially when you think about these guys. Another key contribution of the church was universities. This is the Bodleian Library in Oxford University. I've been inside that building, it's quite impressive. I love Oxford, it's a great town. I used to live fairly near Oxford. A place called Kimpwe, just the other side of the A thirty-four, so I used to get up there quite a lot. It's a lovely town. The university system and indeed Western education in general largely rests upon the foundations of the church. Again, not a lot of people know that. This stuff doesn't get reported. Ancient Greece and ancient Rome, the culture of which underpinned much of Western civilisation, had really nothing like our university system. Modern universities are a distinctly Western European second millennia phenomenon. The first universities were Paris, Bologna, Salamanca, Oxford and Cambridge. The church started all of these institutions and even directed their governance and even adjudicated disputes for quite a while. So not only are faith and science really not contradictory to each other, not only have a huge amount of scientists been strong Christians, but actually the university system in the Western world, from where most of the great scientific discoveries have come, actually came from the Catholic Church. So what's the answer? Well. Firstly, it's interesting, science has an element of faith. Much of science is unproven. For instance, you might have heard of things like string theory, dark matter. These are theories which haven't yet been proven. They're accepted by faith until they're proven. So actually, scientists are exercising an element of faith. They're not completely rational. The way that science works, particularly physics and cosmology, is theoretical guys come up with theories. And then applied physicists put in place experimental models to try and prove it. Sometimes they're proven, sometimes they're not, but a lot of it kind of works on a belief that this is true. Physics and cosmology certainly worked on that. Religion also has an element of the rational and an element of the scientific method. For instance, there's plenty of evidence-based reasoning in the New Testament. When Saint Paul's trying to explain the resurrection, he doesn't say, just accept it on faith. He said, I'm going to give you this evidence. He then opens up the scriptures and said, this is said, and from this we can infer this, and this is what happened. So that kind of scientific method thinking is all through the New Testament. It's also worth saying a little bit about the First Vatican Council. I've got a big long quote here, but I won't read it to you because we don't have much time left. But, sorry, the First Vatican Council, the First Vatican Council was in the eighteen seventies. It was mainly looking at the role of the church and the role of the Pope. But it also looked at this idea of how we come to knowledge, okay? And the First Vatican Council condemned the idea of rationalism. And it also condemned the idea of phideism, okay? It said, actually, the way that the human mind arrives at something is both through rational thought and through faith. We need both. In 1998, Pope John Paul II wrote an encyclical called Faith and Reason. And it starts off like this, it says, "Faith and reason are like two wings on which the human soul ascends to the comprehension of God." Isn't that nice? Faith and wings, sorry, faith and reason are like two wings on which the human soul flies up towards God. We need both of them. Couple of quotes just to bring this home. This is from Lawrence Principay, who is a history professor at John Hopkins University. He's not a Catholic. He's got no interest in defending the church, unlike me. He says this, "It is clear from the historical record that the Catholic Church has been probably the largest single and longest-term patron of science in history." Next quote comes from another historian, again, not Catholic. "The common belief that the actual relations between religion and science over the last few centuries have been marked by deep and enduring hostility is not only historically inaccurate, but actually a caricature so grotesque that what needs to be explained is how it could possibly have achieved any degree of respectability." In other words, what this guy's saying is this idea that faith and science are against each other is so crazy that the big question is how we ever got to the idea in the first place. So really, what the church is saying, there's a few more quotes here, but I won't read them out. You'll get the notes with them in. They say very much the same sort of thing, including a long quote that Pope Benedict XVI wrote to the Pontifical Academy of Science, which is well worth a look. But back to the map analogy, what the church is saying is the church is saying that the well-balanced Christian and the well-balanced person needs both. The church is saying, "We need the rational." The church isn't specifically saying we need science, but the church celebrates the sciences, the church enjoys the sciences. The church is saying that actually the sciences tell us more about this amazing world that God's created. We need faith, we need science, we need them both together. We'll have a short break in a moment. A little bit of recommended reading. Whenever I'm doing these workshops, people always ask me, "Is there something simple we can read?" And the answer is, well, yes, there is. Smart guys who write books, okay, generally tend to write two types of books. They write sort of popular level stuff, which is a bit easier to digest, bit of an introduction. And then they kind of write their big, more heavy kind of magnum opus kind of work for those that really want to get into it. Two books that are more at the popular level and quite easy to digest. And by the way, all of these three books come across quite heavily in the presentation I've given you today. I'm leaning on all quite a lot. On Guard by William Lane Craig is kind of a basic primer in apologetics. Very, very well, very, very well laid out. Next one is Can Science Explain Everything? John Lennox is a professor of mathematics at Oxford University. Very, very smart guy, very big Christian, has debated Richard Dawkins a number of times and come off best. And then finally, at the sort of more academic kind of hardcore end of things, William Lane Craig, this is his main work, Really Reasonable Faith, currently in its third edition. This goes through a heck of a lot of stuff in apologetics, including some of the stuff we're going to look at this afternoon. So, welcome back. Thank you for coming back again. When people come back after a break, it normally means it wasn't too bad before the break. So, as I said, what we were doing before the break was we were giving a kind of a gemmel introduction to this topic. The question posed was, "Has science destroyed faith?" Hopefully, we've given a fairly firm answer that no, it hasn't. Okay, so we're going to do a few case studies now. The first person we're going to look at is Georges Le Metteau. There used to be that whole joke about can you name five famous Belgians? Have you ever heard that? The point, the point is, nobody can. If you're a football fan, it's actually quite easy. You just go Eden Hazard, Kevin De Bruyne, et cetera, et cetera. But generally, there aren't many notable people that most folks could think of coming out of Belgium, but Georges Le Metteau was certainly one of them. Georges Le Metteau was the Catholic priest who first postulated the idea of the universe starting from a single point, what became known as the Big Bang Theory. So, I'm just going to take you through a little bit about him, because he's a really, really interesting guy. He was born in Belgium, he was educated by the Jesuits, and he began studying engineering at university. Then, unfortunately, World War I broke out. He served as an artillery officer in the Belgian army throughout World War I. He served for the whole of the war. He was even decorated for his service. After the war, he went back to studying, but he switched away from engineering and he started studying maths and physics. He gained his doctorate in 1920. At the same time he was studying for his doctorate, he also started studying for the priesthood. Despite being educated by Jesuits, he decided to become a Darcassen priest, and he was ordained in 1923. He went on to Cambridge in 1923. It was while he was at Cambridge that he was introduced to cosmology. And he also from there went on to do a little bit of work at the other famous Cambridge in the academic world, which is Harvard. He did a little bit of work at Harvard, a little bit of work at MIT. Now, before I explain too much about Le Metteau, it's probably worth saying a little bit about Newton and Einstein, who we vaguely mentioned earlier on in the day. Newton and Einstein are seen as the two big names in physics. It was Newton who figured out, among many other things, he figured out the equations of motion. I did A-level maths when I was back at school. I still have nightmares about A-level maths. I was not good at it. And, well, one thing I remember for maths is we had to memorize the equations of motion, okay? V squared equals U squared plus 2AS, those kind of things, which basically tell you acceleration, speed, distance, time and so on and so forth. It was Newton who figured those out. And that was seen as a huge, 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 big breakthrough in physics, okay? Albert Einstein, in the early part of the last century, took Newton's equations, but he realized there was a bit of a problem with Newton's equations. He realized that as you approach the speed of light, as you get closer and closer and closer to the speed of light, Newton's equations didn't work. Time and space start to do really freaky things when you get close to the speed of light, okay? Please don't ask me to explain that in any more detail than that, because I really can't. But basically, he came up with this idea of relativity, okay? Which was all about the speed of light, it was about gravity, it was about so many other things. And actually, his theory of relativity, okay, gemmel relativity and special relativity, they formed the basis of pretty much all of the discoveries that happened after that. So you wouldn't have most of the physics that you've got today without Newton and Einstein, and especially without Einstein, okay? But then you really wouldn't have Einstein without Newton. So those guys are really the big boys on the block. Now, Le Metteau, what Le Metteau did was in the 1920s, he started messing around with Einstein's equations. He worked out that the universe was expanding, okay? He wasn't the first person to do this. There were probably three people in the 1920s who were doing this, okay? But Le Metteau was one of them. In 1927, he published an article, and he published this article in Belgium, okay? So it didn't get much attention. He published an article and he proposed in that article that the universe was expanding. And in that article, he proposed what became known later as Hubble's Law. A few years ago, it was renamed to the Hubble, the Metteau Law. This law posited that galaxies are moving away from the earth at speeds proportionate to their distance. In other words, the further away they are, the faster they're moving away from the earth. And that was really, really interesting. Einstein was really good friends with Le Metteau, and Einstein initially refused to accept that the universe was expanding. Einstein says, "Your calculations are correct, but your physics is atrocious." Okay, they were good friends. He was saying that in a nice way, but that was Einstein's view. Now, when Einstein went to, sorry, when Le Metteau went to Cambridge, his mentor was a guy named Arthur Eddington. And Eddington published a commentary on Le Metteau's work in English, and that brought Le Metteau to a much, much wider audience. And on the back of that, later that year in 1931, he was invited to a meeting of something called the British Scientific Association in London. And that meeting was specifically looking at the relationship between the physical universe and spirituality. Really, really interesting that the British Scientific Association had a meeting like that. Let's get everyone in science together and let's look at how this relates to spirituality. Thought that was really fascinating. It was at that meeting that Le Metteau first put forward this idea that the expanding universe came from an initial point, and that's the important thing. A lot of people figured out, well, three people in the 20s figured out that the universe was expanding. But Le Metteau was the first guy to say, "Actually, the universe is expanding from an initial fixed point." He called this point the primeval atom, and he first proposed this idea at this meeting, which was there to look at the relationship between the physical universe and spirituality. Fascinating stuff. So not only was it a Catholic priest that first proposed the idea of the Big Bang, he first proposed it at this meeting that was all about what's the link between the physical universe and spirituality. Over the next year, through a series of more popular level articles and publications, this theory gained a lot more retention. The phrase "Big Bang Theory," it should be said, was initially a joke. It was coined by a guy named Fred Hoyle. Fred Hoyle was friends of Le Metteau, but he never really bought into this idea of the expanding universe. He stayed with his idea of a steady state universe. In other words, a universe that was in one state and always had been. And he stuck with that idea until he died in 2001. He never really bought into the idea. And he was being interviewed on BBC Radio in 1949, and he came up with this phrase, "The Big Bang Theory." He said, "Oh, it's like some kind of a big bang." So this phrase, "The Big Bang," was supposed to be pejorative. It was supposed to be a kind of taking the Mickey, if you like. It wasn't nasty, because the two of them were friends, but it was this phrase, "The Big Bang Theory," that stuck. It was this phrase that kind of caught popular imagination. Now, on the back of his newfound fame, Le Metteau was elected to the Pontifical Academy of Sciences. And in 1960, he became its president, so he became the church's leading guide on science. As I've said, he was one of about three people in the early to mid 1920s to posit this idea of the expanding universe. But he was the first person to propose an original single starting point, and that's his big contribution. The static, past-eternal universe, the universe that was just in one state and had existed forever, that was the dominant idea at the time. A lot of people, including Einstein, were behind that idea. And it was Le Metteau that eventually convinced most of them, including actually Einstein. Now, it didn't all happen quickly. For a long time, there was opposition to this idea of the Big Bang Theory. Partly because the other ideas were so dominant, but also partly because it was seen as an attempt to import religious concepts back into physics. It wasn't until the 1960s that the Big Bang Theory finally became widely accepted. And what was interesting was a huge amount of the backlash against the Big Bang Theory was actually coming from atheists, and particularly from communists in the Eastern Bloc. The Soviet Union said, "This idea is an attempt to bring back the Christian notion of creation, and it is to be resisted." And that was the idea. Christians, or rather atheists often kind of say to Christians, you know, "You guys, when Darwin happened, you kind of got caught on the wrong side of science." And that's not true unless you take a literal interpretation of the Bible. But whenever people talk about this kind of god of the gaps idea, you know, this idea that when science makes an advance, Christianity gets squeezed out. It's worth noting that actually atheism's been caught out by science a lot as well. You know, it was Christians who were saying, "This universe started from this fixed starting point, this primeval atom, this big bang." And then it was largely atheists that were saying, "No, it didn't." Now, in the 1960s, as I said, this idea became fairly dominant. But actually, what happened was, once the Big Bang Theory became accepted, Le Metteau's part in it was marginalized for a long time, and he was kind of pushed out of the equation. You know, to their great shame, a lot of people were a bit annoyed about the fact that it was a Catholic priest that had come up with this idea. So he was airbrushed out of history. He's been largely rehabilitated lately. The law that he put in place was called Hubble's Law. Because by the way, it was Edwin Hubble that actually proved that the universe was expanding through his observations in the late 20s. As I've said, what happens generally in physics and cosmology is the theoretical guys have these theories, and actually it's the practical guys that prove the theory. So it was Hubble that proved the theory. The law that Le Metteau came up with was known as Hubble's Law. But in 2018, whichever body looks after this had a vote, and they decided that it should be renamed the Hubble-Le Metteau Law. So actually, Le Metteau's name has been rehabilitated and brought far, far more back into it. Weirdly though, in 2017, the BBC did a documentary about the Big Bang, and even at that point, they completely missed Le Metteau's name out of it. So even at that point, people like the BBC were still trying to kind of keep him out of the picture. Yet it's absolutely unquestionable that the Big Bang Theory was Le Metteau's thing, and it was him, his thing alone. It's unclear as to how much he saw faith and science as linked. A lot of the guys we mentioned earlier, like Kepler, like Newton and so on and so forth, Galileo, they saw faith and science as basically informing and backing each other up. It's likely Le Metteau saw the two as a little bit more separate, as separate disciplines, which is fair enough. But he went on record again and again and again and again and again as saying there's absolutely no conflict between the two, which is really, really important. He said this about faith and science. He said, "It appeared to me that there were two paths to truth." I'll say that again. "It appeared to me that there were two paths to truth, and I decided to follow both of them." So faith and science, two paths to truth, and Le Metteau decided to follow both of them, followed both of them rather well. So that's Georges Le Metteau, and I always think, I really love this guy, because I always think that's just an amazing factor to drop in conversations. It's an amazing factor to drop in. I mean, even if, if you ever get challenged by the whole kind of faith and science thing, you know, even if you can't remember much of this, even if you don't have time to lay out a whole thing, just simply laying down the fact that it was a Catholic priest that came up with the Big Bang Theory, I think is just a massive body blow to the kind of "science has destroyed faith" kind of argument. And if you can remember to, you can then drop in that it was also a Catholic priest that started the science of genetics, first came up with the idea of the heliocentric universe, all sorts of stuff. So that is Georges Le Metteau. Now, the second case study I want to have a look at is called "The Fine-Tuning Argument." Now, I'm going to start off with a health warning here. This will make your brain hurt. This is some quite complicated stuff. As we're doing this, if it looks like I understand it completely, then rest assured that is a false impression, okay? I understand as much of this as I need to understand to do stuff like this. But this is very, very complicated stuff. It's also quite complicated to explain, but I'm going to give it a go. So, the fine-tuning argument. Basically, the way to explain the fine-tuning argument, I'll start off with a quote. This quote comes from a big dictionary of apologetics, it's called. "If there were even the slightest variation at the moment of the Big Bang, making conditions different, even to a small degree, no life of any kind would exist. In order for life to be present today, an incredible set of demands must have been present in the early universe, and they were." Okay. Now, in the last section, we said a little bit about the path from Newton to Einstein, and from there to Le Metteau and Hubble. Thanks to these guys, we have a model of physics and cosmology that we can investigate further. One thing that was discovered, the more these things were looked into, was that the universe being able to support life is the result of certain values and certain constants being within very narrow ranges. In other words, it is highly, 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 highly unlikely that this universe would be able to support life without somebody spinning certain dials and setting things just right. If that doesn't make sense, let me try and spell it out. There are certain values in the universe that we are able to gauge and we're able to measure quite accurately. For instance, there is something called the cosmological constant. The cosmological constant is essentially the force of the Big Bang, okay? It's basically how powerful the explosion was. Now, if the cosmological constant was a teeny bit more powerful, then it would have expanded too fast, and the universe would have just faded out. Nothing would have been able to come together, to form matter, to form stars and so on, okay? If the cosmological constant was a little bit weaker, then gravity would have taken over too quickly, and the whole thing would have been sucked back together, okay? Now, when we say a little bit weaker or a little Now, when we say a little bit weaker or a little bit stronger, we're not talking about a fairly huge range. And we're not talking about, well, maybe a one in two chance. No, 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 no. The cosmological constant is fine tuned to ten to the power of a hundred and twenty, okay? So in other words, the chances that the cosmological constant would have the exact power that it needed to make life possible is one in ten to the power of a hundred and twenty. That's one in ten with a hundred and twenty zeros behind it, okay? That is crazy, crazy, crazy odds. Here's another one. Um, inside the nucleus of an atom, there is something called the weak force, okay? Don't ask me to explain that, but it's basically one of the forces that holds an atom together. If this force was slightly stronger or slightly weaker, that atom simply couldn't hold together. That atom would just not be able to do anything. No matter could form, no life could form, okay? And the chances of the weak force being the exact value to support life isn't quite as big as the last one. It's only one in tens the power of a hundred, okay? That's one intense with a hundred zeros behind it. Bear in mind, by the way, the chances of winning the national lottery in this country is about one in twenty million, okay? So that's one in twenty with six zeros behind it. The chances of the weak force having the right value is one in ten with a hundred zeros behind it. The chances of winning the Castle Rick lottery, by the way, much, much better, just, just throwing that out there. Okay. Next, this one's really cool. This one was only discovered, uh, fairly recently by a chap called Roger Penrose. And Roger Penrose won the Nobel Prize, so he knows what he's talking about. Okay, low entropy, right. Low entropy basically is the unused energy present at the Big Bang, okay? Now, this also had to have a certain value. The chances of the low entropy state at the beginning of the universe being the exact range to support life or being the exact value for life to develop is one in ten to the power of ten to the power of a hundred and twenty-three. So that's not a hundred and twenty-three zeros behind the ten, no, 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 no. That's ten to the power of a hundred and twenty-three is the number of zeros. Now, the way that Roger Penrose explains that is if you wanted to write down the chance of low entropy states at the beginning of the universe being able to support life, here's how you write down the number, okay? You have to write down one in ten and then you have to put a zero on every single atom in the known universe, okay? Yeah, that's how big that number is. It's just crazy, crazy, crazy big, okay? And another one is the size ratio, not ration, ratio, okay? I'll probably type ration just as Harry Kane was being useless last night. The size ratio between the proton and the neutron inside atoms. It's like, the, the proton is something like one point zero zero two, something, 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 something. Um, the odds there are nowhere near as great as the things above, but it's still one in many millions, okay? If those two, if those two sizes weren't exactly aligned, okay? Then essentially it couldn't work, okay? There are other examples of fine tuning. And what I've done here is I've just stuck to the physics and cosmology, um, examples of fine tuning. There are examples of fine tuning that come from biology as well. To be honest, that's not really my bag. I'm not that interested in the biology side of things. Um, but I know there are quite a lot. So basically, this universe is in a ridiculously fine tuned state, okay? It's as though at the beginning of the universe, somebody, some kind of, I don't know, God maybe, um, set the dials at exactly the right point so that life could happen. Now, here's the important thing to say. Fine tuning is widely accepted in the science community. People quibble as to the reasons behind it, but you won't find many credible scientists saying that fine tuning isn't there, okay? Science does look at these values and science does say, that's actually quite remarkable. You know, it's, it's actually highly, 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 highly unlikely that life could have evolved in this universe just by chance, okay? So fine tuning is widely accepted, but people quibble over the reason behind it. As Christians, we go straight to it's God, okay? Atheist scientists obviously want to come up with another explanation. Now, before we go any further, I should just explain that I don't think personally that this is a slam dunk proof of God, okay? It's as close as you're gonna get. Um, actually, I think the moral argument's more persuasive, but anyway, um, I don't think this is slam dunk proof of God because I don't think God would leave us perfect proof that we couldn't turn away from because that would destroy free will. Um, and actually, some of the theories that come back, they might be true, but they're all fairly unproven. But I think we can say that this is highly, highly, highly persuasive. And I think we can say actually that the weight of current physics leans far more in the direction of there being an intelligent creator than away from it. Now, now that I've kind of laid down the fine tuning argument, and as I've said, if you don't understand, uh, all of this stuff, please don't worry because I don't understand it very well myself, okay? But suffice it to say, fine tuning is very widely accepted. And there are several examples of fine tuning. Gravity is another one, by the way. If the power of gravity was slightly stronger or slightly weaker, we'd have a problem. And as I said, there's also biological fine tuning. I don't know much about this. Um, I believe that at the point in the universe's development, there was a point where life could have now emerged. And life emerged freakishly quickly after that point was reached. So people talk about biological fine tuning as well. Um, I don't know much about that, not really my thing, but it's there. Now, let's look at some of the counter arguments because if you Google this, what you'll see is you'll see the counter arguments. So it's worth just slapping them all down fairly quickly. Um, one counter argument is the multiverse. The multiverse is the idea that our universe is one among a great many and that therefore one of them had to support life. It's a plausible theory and it might be true, which is why we can't say that, uh, the fine tuning argument is slam dunk proof. But here's the thing about the multiverse. Firstly, in order for this to work, this would require a lot of universes. It would require billions of billions of billions of trillions of trillions of trillions of trillions of universes. And you can probably go on saying trillions of trillions all day, okay? That's how many would be required, okay? The second problem with the multiverse is that there's absolutely no proof of it whatsoever. It's an idea that's straight out of sci-fi, okay? It's been described as, quote, unproven and also probably unprovable. And it was also described by one scientist as being unworthy of serious scientific inquiry, okay? So it might be true, but proving it is a very, very, very long way away. It's basically an idea taken from sci-fi. And this is a really interesting look at where current science is around faith. You know, you've got this idea in science that strongly nods towards there being a God. And in order for atheists to challenge it, they have to go to kind of basically Red Dwarf, you know? Okay, next is the cyclical universe theory. The cyclical universe theory is similar to the multiverse, but what the cyclical universe theory says is that basically our universe constantly has a big bang, then contracts, then has a big bang, then contracts, then has a big bang, then contracts, again and again and again and again eternally. Now, if that happened, and if that happened eternally, then the chances are eventually one universe would be able to support life, no problem, okay? But there's a few problems with the cyclical universe theory. Firstly, there's no guarantee that a different iteration of the universe would give rise to different laws of physics and different constants. There's no way to say that. Secondly, there's a big problem with this, okay? Um, does anybody know? We, we, we now know about the Big Bang. Does anybody know what science thinks is going to be the end of the universe? No? Well, the theory for years was the big squeeze. For years and years, up until the beginning of this century, they thought that there was going to be the Big Bang and that eventually gravity was going to kick in and it was all going to come back together and come back to that primeval atom, okay? That was what they thought was going to happen for years and years and years. But at the beginning of this century, scientists figured out that actually the expansion of our universe is speeding up, okay? And if it was all going to come back together one day, you'd expect to see this expansion slowing down. But actually, it's speeding up. So the current consensus, the current belief is that the end of this universe is going to be that basically the universe is just going to fade out, okay? The universe is just going to fade out. Matter is going to get further and further apart until there isn't enough energy to do anything, okay? It's called the big chill or the big freeze because stars are going to die. Energy is going to dissipate. You're just going to have cold dead matter eternally floating further and further away. And by the way, I'm putting that on my list headed atheism is really grim, okay? Now, here's the problem with that. That theory kind of torpedoes the cyclical universe theory because there's no way for it to come back together, okay? And if that can happen even once, okay? Then the cyclical universe thing can't happen. And actually, interestingly, and you might be able to get your head around this or you might not, if an eternal cyclical universe were possible, then various values would have to not go beyond a certain point, which would mean again, some form of fine tuning. So that doesn't work. What's next? Next is the anthropic principle. This is really annoying and really quite lame and it comes up again and again, especially if you Google fine tuning on YouTube, okay? The anthropic principle says that the idea that our existence is enough. So yeah, it's the idea basically that our existence is enough to explain fine tuning. Of course, the universe is fine tuned because we're here to see it. Now, any thinking person can immediately spot the problem in that argument. The fact that it's happened is not necessarily proof that it had to happen, okay? Um, two different forms of this argument that you get, you get what's called the lottery argument, okay? So the atheist will say, if I win the lottery, there's no point me saying, wow, isn't it amazing that I won the lottery? What were the odds of me winning the lottery because someone had to win the lottery, okay? Problem with that is that only works in conjunction with the multiverse. That only works if there are other places where different things could have happened. We're not saying that someone has to win the lottery. We're saying that one specific person has to win the lottery. And in actual fact, we're saying that one specific person has to win every lottery in the world every week for the rest of their lives, okay? And if they don't, all life in the universe will cease to exist. Yeah? Um, another, another version of this is the puddle argument, okay? I heard a guy once saying that the water in a puddle doesn't get to say, isn't it amazing? Um, the puddle is the exact same shape as the water in the puddle. The point is that actually the water just molded itself to the puddle. Um, if the puddle were a different shape, then the water would be a different shape. Again, that misunderstands it because what we're saying is we're saying if the puddle were a slightly different shape, the water couldn't exist in any shape, okay? So the anthropic principle doesn't really work. For it to be valid, it needs the multiverse theory or it needs the cyclical universe theory. But I think, to be honest, it's a self-defeating argument because most people, when they hear the argument, they think, well, the fact that something has happened isn't necessarily proof that it had to happen, yeah? Okay, what's next? Next is, uh, what's called carbon chauvinism. We as human beings are carbon-based life forms, okay? Um, all life forms that we know in existence are carbon-based life forms, okay? So basically what this says is it says that the fine tuning arguments only covers carbon-based life and therefore it may be possible with different values and different constants for, um, life to evolve in a different way that we can't see. That's a common argument and it is plausible. Again, like the universe theory, we can't rule it out completely, it might be true. But here's the problem. If some of the values were only slightly off, then we're not just saying that life couldn't exist. We're saying that matter couldn't exist. We're saying that chemistry couldn't exist, much less life of any kind. Now, secondly, there are only so many elements on the periodic table and there's nothing to suggest that life based on another element could happen within a narrower range and certainly not a significantly narrower range. Even if there were a million other elements, even if all of those elements could support life and even if all of those elements, um, for each of those elements, it was a million times more likely that they could support life, it would still be a, uh, odds of one in a billion, 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 okay? So that kind of doesn't work either. The final theory, and this is the theory that everybody normally goes to, is what's called the theory of everything, um, often shortened to the tone, okay? So the theory of everything, remember we said that what they try to do in physics is they try to unify things. They try to bring forces together. So in physics, you have the weak force, you have the, uh, the strong forces, it's called, you have the cosmological constant, you have gravity. There's a number of different forces and the, the holy grail for physics is this unified field theory, which basically brings all of them together and shows how they're linked. And a lot of physicists believe that when physics finally arrives at this theory of everything, it will explain how fine tuning worked in the way that it did. Now, again, that could happen. But my problem with this is it's basically the equivalent of saying, well, we don't have an answer to that, but one day we're going to have an awesome answer, so there. Um, it's not an answer. The theory of everything isn't just an unproven theory. It's not even a theory yet. M-theory, as it's called, is probably the best candidate, but M-theory requires eleven dimensions to make it work. There is just simply no suggestion as to how a theory might bring together all of these forces in a way that explains fine tuning. So the theory of everything isn't a theory, it's a theory about a theory. And actually, the theory of everything is what Richard Dawkins goes to. Um, essentially, if you read The God Delusion, that's his explanation to fine tuning. He says that in the same way that Darwin came along and disproved the idea that man was created specially, in the same way, one day physics will come along with the theory of everything and explain fine tuning. Now, the two things are very, very different. That's what most scientists say. But also, the answer to that is, well, okay, go on then, do it. Um, but as I said, the theory of everything isn't even a theory, it's a theory about a theory. And there's just simply no explanation for how a theory might even begin to explain fine tuning. So whenever people say to you, well, the theory of everything will explain that, what they're essentially saying is one day we'll have an answer to that, but I don't know where it's going to come from and I don't know how it's going to come. So it's really, it's just not an answer. One final thing that actually I missed off this list is some people say that one possible, one possible explanation might be that if you change one value and then change another value, they might work in different ways. That's possible, but there's no way of saying that actually that would make things more likely. And also various experiments and various models have pretty much ruled that out. So there we are, that's the fine tuning argument. And that's the counter theories to the fine tuning argument, pretty well slapped down. Um, back to Fred Hoyle. Remember Fred Hoyle was a mate of Lemaître? It was Fred Hoyle, Fred Hoyle actually did a lot of work on biological fine tuning. Um, he was the one who sort of pejoratively came up with this idea of the Big Bang. He got a lot wrong, but he was a good guy. He said this, he said, "A common sense interpretation of the facts suggests that a super intellect has monkeyed with the physics as well as with chemistry and biology and that there are no blind forces worth speaking about in nature." Uh, this is a quote which is often used with fine tuning. "A super intellect has monkeyed with physics as well as chemistry and biology." Okay, this is a scientist basically saying it looks very, very much as though somebody has messed around with physics. That's somebody for us basically being a god, okay? So there we are, that's, uh, we finished a little bit earlier than I thought we would, which is always nice. So that's a couple of case studies, that is Georges Lemaître and that's the fine tuning argument. Um, that's basically the end of the input, but has anybody got any questions?